Okay, I want to call the meeting to order and have real call please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you'll stand, we'll give the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence and we can maybe remember the boys at St. John's Military School died.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of May 15th through 21st, 2016, is National Public Works Week in the city of Salina. Teresa Nicholson with the Public Works Department will read the
Hi Teresa.
Hello.
Do you want to give your name and address, please?
Teresa Nicholson. I live at 2718 Don My Road in Gibson, Kansas.
Okay.
The proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, stormwater and levee systems, solid waste collection and disposal operations, municipal fleet maintenance services, water treatment and distribution, water collection and treatment, engineering and inspection, public facilities, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on the services and facilities each and every day, as well as in times of emergency and community disaster, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore I, KJ Crawford, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week in the city of Salina, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works to the recognize and contribu-- sorry, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed the 16th day of May, 2016.
Thank you Teresa.
Thank you.
Do you have any events planned?
We are promoting public awareness through social media, and then we also have an appreciation luncheon for staff on Thursday, May 19th.
Very good, okay. I have your proclamation here. For its citizens forum, is there anyone here to address the commission? About anything that is not on the agenda today? Just give your name and address. Most of us know you, but...
Lloyd Davidson, 2549 Angus Lane. On behalf of the board of Friends of the River, we just want to thank you, each of you, for your support. Without that total support, the effort of the river would not have happened. The boat wouldn't have happened. We look forward to working closely with you. A lot of works ahead, and we know we're all going to have to be in the, hopefully, in the boat together. I know a lot of people have worked on this for a long time. I think 40 years there have been efforts, and finally we're successful. But like I said, tons of work is ahead of us, so again, thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time. Yes, Mr. Bankston.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Did have an item we would like to request that you add to your agenda today. The final version of a proposed resolution and blue sheet are should be delivered shortly by the city clerk's office, but the matter relates to the suit filed by the city in relation to the protest petition having to do with the charter ordinance, and we would request that you add that item to your agenda today. And I'm sorry, I was turning quickly to try to know when might suggest where in the meeting that that be considered. It would be best, and I'm sorry if you could bear with me for a moment, if that could possibly come in between what is now item 7.1 and 7.2, that would be extremely helpful. It is identified as administration item number 7.4 on the blue sheet that will be arriving shortly. But, sorry for that unique circumstance, but that would be appreciated if that's thought to be appropriate by the commission.
How about 7.1A, would that...
Well, that'd be fine.
Okay. Do you have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda?
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 9th, 2016. Item 6.2, authorize the purchase of a Ford 250 Transit van from Long MacArthur Ford Company in the amount of $19,856.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Does anyone have anything they want to take away or have talk about under consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, administration.
Item 7.1, resolution number 16-7350, authorizing the mayor to enter into a Salina Regional Airport Law Enforcement Support Agreement with the Salina Airport Authority, Saline County, and the Saline County Sheriff's Office for the provision of the law enforcement services for the Salina Regional Airport.
Okay. Mr. Gage.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. Typically, I'd give you, go over my staff report. It's out there for the public to view, but today we have Tim Rogers, Executive Director with the Salina Airport Authority, and I told him I would give him my time, and he'll take you through it and answer your questions for you.
Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning, this afternoon, to visit with you about proposed law enforcement services agreement and support agreement that's necessary, kind of the last pieces to kind of come into place as we get ready to restore scheduled air service at the Salina Regional Airport for the citizens of Salina, Saline County, and all of north central Kansas. We were able to announce on Friday morning that the start of the nonstop flights to Denver will be Wednesday, June 15th, the first flight departing Salina at 7:45 a.m. I hope you all have your tickets already purchased for that Denver trip. We were successful, as been reported, and as we've been kind of posting the progress as far as obtaining the approval from the TSA for the return of passenger screening services at the MJ Kennedy Air Terminal for those flights. A key component to passenger screening services is the need for the presence of law enforcement at the screening checkpoint. That presence is provided for within a document called the Airport Security Program, which is a program that's developed between the Airport Authority and the Transportation Security Administration. The details of that agreement are shared and will be shared with the Salina Police Department, with the Saline County Sheriff's Office, but they do provide the provisions for the presence of law enforcement at the screening checkpoint. Very candidly and frankly, law enforcement's presence is essential. Cannot, we cannot assure the security of the aircraft and the passengers without our uniformed law officers', you know, presence. Today, I think very much so, we recognize their service to our communities across the nation, and the dedication, the uniform presence of a authorized law enforcement officer, or Salina Police Officer, or Saline County Deputy, does change behavior at a point where sometimes there's stress, sometimes where there are infractions or violations of local, state, or federal law, and most importantly, there must be provisions for the response to the screening checkpoint by law enforcement. The agreement before you today outlines that agreement among, between the Salina Airport Authority, the Salina Police Department, and the Saline County Sheriff's Office. We are fortunate to live in a community where the Salina Police Department and the Saline County Sheriff's Office working so well together. The agreement provides that this will be a shared responsibility by police officers and sheriff's deputies. The operations divisions of both departments will coordinate, you know, when each, whether when each department will be at the screening checkpoint. They will train together. They will work with the Transportation Security Administration, the Airport Authority staff, to comply with the terms of the Airport Security Program, and both the Sheriff's Office and Salina Police Department are prepared to be a part of that first flight, first departure on June 15th, and all subsequent other flights, to assure the security of our travelers in and out of our community. Be glad to answer any questions that the commission may have and provide you any additional details, but I must, you know, again, thank you for your support to this point to get us there, your partnership in restoring scheduled air service to our community, and I really must certainly recognize the support of Chief Nelson, the City Manager's Office, and in developing this project and this program to this point. So, thank you very much.
Okay, is there any questions?
What's the time element that's required each day for an officer to be present?
It is prescribed and is defined within the Airport Security Program, which by federal law is deemed to be security-sensitive information, and that's the part I cannot discuss with you in a public meeting, the exact timing.
Not the exact timing, but the how much time element is involved during the process of screening?
Approximately about 45 minutes to one hour. 30 minutes prior to departure and a period of time following.
So that would be four times a day?
Two flights per day. It's only for in plane.
That's right, for departures.
Only for departures.
Two times. Is there, on page three of the agreement, on number six, there's an item called expenses. Is that, what expenses are referred to there?
The clause states, expenses, the Sheriff's Office and the Salina Police Department shall not be responsible for any expenses related to the operation of the screening checkpoint. That would be the expenses that are incurred by the Transportation Security Administration for staffing, equipping, and supplies involved with the security screening checkpoint.
Okay. But there would be expenses to the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department for their participation in this process?
The type of coverage that we have contemplated and coordinated with the Salina Police Department and the Sheriff's Office is that a officer or deputy that is currently on patrol within the area of the airport, near Port Industrial Center, this would be part of that officer's or that deputy's normal course of duties in any, in any, in that day, in that duty period of time. Police officers and Sheriff's deputies are routinely at the airport, Airport Industrial Center at the present time, routinely patrol the facility and provide a uniform presence within the facility, but it would be an additional duty to their duty time and to their, as they work their shift.
Would there be any training necessary for these people, and how many, how many, being on shifts and stuff, how many people would need to be trained?
Well, we're looking at just the officer or deputy that's on a morning shift or an afternoon shift, and that does rotate as far as the scheduling, and again, the agreement provides that the Sheriff's Office and the Salina PD will handle that scheduling and balance that out. They'll cover for each other when necessary, and again, as they do so much already within our community. But yes, there will be some training. It'll be added to the process. The Transportation Security Administration will handle that training and that orientation. We have many, some of our Saline County deputies and a few of our police officers, officers were part of this type of agreement, this type of service, when the TSA was here six years ago. So, there's some knowledge already within the force, and, but that training will be, it's, the basic law enforcement training that a deputy and a police officer has already really is the basis. It's the procedures and kind of really what is expected by the TSA, and some orientation that occurs. That first meeting, there have been meetings already, but the first meeting to go over the specifics of this agreement and the Airport Security Program is already scheduled for Wednesday afternoon of this week.
Okay, because I did notice that there were record-keeping requirements to this as well, so...
Similar to, try to keep it to the exact type of record-keeping that a police officer or a sheriff's deputy does already. No new record, no new form. If there's any new forms at the checkpoint, they'll be generated by the TSA Airport Authority, and they'll be recorded right there before the officer or the deputy leaves the shift.
Okay. Just a question on the fiscal note, because part of the blue sheet mentions that the Airport Authority will be applying to DHS for grant fundings, because currently there are no reimbursement fundings available. So what, I think that's kind of maybe what led Commissioner Hardy, and I know myself, to say, what are the, what is really the fiscal impact? Because if we're seeking to be reimbursed for something, what are we, are you looking at higher, would that reimbursement then hire an individual person to be there?
I'll take this in two parts. First, I'll defer any fiscal impact related to the Salina Police Department to the city manager and for staff to answer that. The intent in the agreement is that, right now, there are no DHS, Department of Homeland Security, or TSA funds available for any reimbursement of any cost or any local costs incurred. If those programs become available, again, then the Airport Authority would make application for funds if there is a need for that, some funding that needs to occur, whether it's for, it's not intended for additional staffing. I believe that the current staffing level for both the Salina Police Department and the Sheriff's Office is sufficient to take on their responsibility. In according to Chief Nelson and Sheriff Kokonaski, that is the case that has been indicated to us as we develop this agreement in partnership with the chief and the sheriff. But in the event that there is a program that comes available that is appropriate, then the Airport Authority will seek those funds in coordination with the city, the county, Salina Police Department, and the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioners, just to be clear, that's the pay just for labor time. We have no cost out of pocket, and if we're talking about two flights that leave, it'd be 45 minutes to an hour, split with the Sheriff's Office, we're talking about maybe an hour a day, probably at the most. So, the time impact is insignificant altogether. If this becomes available and we can get reimbursed for just our time utilization, that's fine. If not, it's easily absorbable without any impact to our daily services. It's very easy for us.
Okay, 'cause just a couple things. Is this how they handled it when we had this before?
Yes.
Is this the same way we handled it then?
A local agreement, but the difference is that the city was not a part of the program six years ago. This provides the city an opportunity to participate in the restoration of scheduled air service in partnership with its Sheriff's Office.
Okay, so the Sheriff's Office handled it exclusively last time?
Previously.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Yeah, because I mean, I think just the concern is, is, I mean, cost recovery, and while we look at continual process improvements, it's kind of adding a step into something, and we just kind of want to make sure that, at least I do, that we're looking at some of these things, so...
If there is a need that is communicated, then if we can find a grant program, then the commitment is, the Airport Authority will seek those funds, but there are no programs available at the present time. Stepping back, the first time that there was a request or a need for local law enforcement for screening services was 2002. That was after the events of 9/11, September 11th of 2001. That is when TS, the Transportation Security Administration was created, and then there was screening services starting at that time, which ended six years ago. So, the county at that time took on the service, and there's reasons why the city, very real reason why the city couldn't at that time. At the time, the city's police force and staffing was severely impacted by officers being called to active duty. So, that's my recollection for that, going back a few years. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for bringing air service to Salina.
Well, we're pleased to do that, and you have some information packets at your seat, and for anybody in the audience, there's an information package ready if they would like to have one before they leave the commission meeting today.
Yes, and I think any of you in the audience who might travel, you might want to go through security out there, and then you don't have to go through it again when you reach Denver, which is wonderful. If you stop and think about the long lines you see at Dallas, or Fort Worth, or even Wichita. Okay, is there any public comment? If not, entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, move adoption resolution number 16-7350, authorizing the mayor to enter into the Salina Regional Airport Law Enforcement Support Agreement with the Salina Airport Authority, Saline County, and the Saline County Sheriff's Office for the provision of the law enforcement services for the Salina Regional Airport.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes 5-0. Did you want me to bring up this particular 7.4 now?
That would be, yes, we're ready if that's the commission's wish.
Did you want to explain that a little bit more?
I believe Ms. Wicks has the item, and she may want to introduce it.
Item 7.4, resolution making certain findings related to Charter Ordinance Number 39, the Charter Ordinance Protest Petition and the County Election Officer's Determination Regarding the Number of Signatures Attached to the Charter Ordinance Protest Petition and Directing the City's Legal Counsel to Dismiss Without Prejustice the City's Petition Challenging the Validity of the Protest Petition in Saline County District Court, Case Number 16 CV 130.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate your consideration of the item, and you're adding it to your agenda today. You have before you a blue sheet, a proposed resolution, and a certified copy of the letter from Don Merriman in his role as the county election officer, directed to Shandy Wicks as the Salina City Clerk, dated Friday, May 6th, 2016. That is the report by Mr. Merriman's office from the count that they performed since we last addressed this matter approximately two weeks ago. The blue sheet essentially contains the same information as the resolution, both in terms of background and what the resolution actually does. You will recall that in the context of a charter ordinance, the Kansas Constitution determines the process by which those can be adopted. It's significant because in doing so, we are adopting provisions that differ from state statutes that are not uniformly applicable to cities as a whole. That's why it's dealt with in the Constitution. That charter ordinance has to undergo two readings and is published twice. It really does not go into effect unless 60 days passes after that second publication without the filing of a valid protest petition. If there is the filing of a valid protest petition, it must, in order to go into effect, you have to call an election within 30 days. If you do not, it does not go into effect. If you do, then it's a matter of the outcome of the election as to whether it goes into effect. So, kind of a unique process, but that's the situation. You'll recall that the situation you were faced with was that a protest petition was filed within the time required, but based upon our recommendation, we believe that it had certain deficiencies as to the substance of the petition. You were faced with two deadlines running simultaneously. The first was the need to keep an eye on that 30-day period in which you had to call an election if there was a valid petition. You also had a expedited process under the state law that provided that if you wished to challenge the validity of the petition itself, or the question posed in the petition, that had to be filed within 20 days, and if you did so, the court had 20 days to enter its order. So, things had to be moving quickly. The, as you know, the county election officer's office was processing the mail-in ballots. We did not know when they might even have opportunity to complete a count, and all of those deadlines were running from the date of filing the petition, not when you learned what the count on the numbers might be. So, we had advised you, and you determined that it, by necessity, that challenge had to be filed in the Saline County District Court. I know we all regret it, but we advised you that it appeared that in order to obtain jurisdiction and legitimately advance that challenge, it was necessary to name and to serve those persons who were the circulators of the petition. We regretted that, but we had case precedent in Kansas that told us that that appeared to be necessary. We did so, and all of this, of course, before knowing what the outcome might be as to the number of signatures. You then have the intervening event of the county election officer providing their report and their determination that the number of signatures attached to the petition was inadequate, and even further, as noted in the letter, there were certain signatures that were not allowed because of the residence address of the circulator not being shown on the petition, but that even if those signatures were added back into the total, the requisite number was not satisfied. With that background, the resolution goes on to make certain determinations. First of all, you acknowledge receipt and acceptance of the county election officer's report letter. You also find that based upon that determination of the number of valid signatures on the protest petition, the protest petition was found to be legally insufficient as to require submission of Charter Ordinance Number 39 to a referendum. You then also determine that pursuant to Article 12, Section 5 of the Kansas Constitution, that Charter Ordinance 39 took effect April 27th, 2016. That was day 61 after the second publication, and that it does not require submission to a referendum. And under those circumstances, Section 4 of the resolution directs us to dismiss without prejudice the petition challenging the validity, which will have the effect of dismissing the suit and eliminating the necessity of the hearing that is currently scheduled for this Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. So, our recommendation is that this would seem to be the prudent course of action. Notice of the dismissal will, of course, be mailed immediately, and part of our sense of asking that you take it up at this time in your meeting was so that, in fact, we could be sure to get those copies of the notice in the mail to those folks who we regrettably had to name in order to advance the challenge. So, those will be, depending... So, those will be, depending on your action this evening, those will be mailed yet this evening. So, any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Bankston. Any questions? Any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to...
Madam Mayor, I guess we're not having a resolution number at this point, maybe...
There is one.
There is. Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the resolution itself.
Ah, well, I would move that we enact a proposal, proposed resolution number 167351, and direct legal counsel to dismiss without prejudice this petition challenging the validity of the protest petition in Saline County District Court, Case Number 16 CV 130.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 167351. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Can it pass this 5-0?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bankston.
Item 7.2, Establishment of Tricentennial Fund at the Greater Salina Community Foundation.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an interesting opportunity that we are hoping to have support for and to have clearly articulated, because in 2074, I'm going to be 114, and I hope that my memory, I'm trusting my memory will not be strong enough to take care of our tricentennial celebration. Very briefly, and I'll just highlight a couple of elements from the blue sheet. Private citizens in the years leading up to 1976 raised funds to create a downtown street fair celebration in honor of the nation's 200th birthday. That street fair gave rise to what eventually became the Smoky Hill River Festival, or the spirit of that fair went on. But before the River Festival had been conceived, which wasn't for about another six months after the conclusion of the first street fair, the citizens who had raised money, one former mayor and another active citizen, Gerald Chadwick, Karen Graves, tried to determine what to do with the excess revenues that they had. And so, they established an account in a local bank for the tricentennial celebration, not knowing what that might be or mean, but felt that that was a good seed money for 100 years later. We fast forward through that. That money was in that local bank for a period of time, and then as ownership and management of the bank changed, and new management came in, they asked the city of Salina to receive those funds, which at the time was somewhere in the neighborhood, I think, of $1,500. That amount then transferred into a special account of the city, and has been there for the bulk of that time without a clear designation of, other than that placeholder for the tricentennial The decision to ask for your authorization or to support the city manager being able to sign this agreement for the establishment of a fund at the Greater Salina Community Foundation for the tricentennial celebration allows us to clearly articulate the intent and the purpose of the original funds that were made available, and to provide a bit of a roadmap and a range of possibilities for folks in about 2074 to begin the planning for Salina's response to the 300th anniversary of our nation. So, the request of the donors for their initial intent was that it wasn't a festival. It was about a birthday celebration for the nation. But they were supportive of those funds being under the umbrella of the Salina Arts and Humanities Foundation. The foundation board has approved, including the administrative costs, if any, or the minor expenses and time that my time is spent as a staff member or future Arts and Humanities directors would do. And then that fund would be established and held, and be able to receive additional funds plus interest at the community foundation until about two years prior to the celebration, and then it'll be somebody else's problem. So, anyway, I would stand for questions or clarification. If you need additional details, I'd be happy to provide those.
Any questions of staff?
One question, is there any provision for these funds to be used for some other great purpose before the 300th? I might make it to the 250th. I'm trying to do the arithmetic real quick. I think I have a mathematical chance of getting to that one, but...
You can just come to the festival until then. We're going to keep having a festival. No, the funds are specifically earmarked to become available by 2074 for the planning of, but it does not specify whether it's a, it could be the commissioning of a sculpture, of a historic marker, of an event, of a party, of a celebration, of a need that up to this point may not have been even conceived. There is some freedom with that. The other plans would be, and we did include in this language, to provide guidance to a future community members and leaders that this would be a community-designated allocation of the fund. It wouldn't be the Arts and Humanities Foundation, it wouldn't be Salina Arts and Humanities, it wouldn't just be the city commission, but maybe in consultation with the community group. The outlining of the instructions in the blue sheet and in the provision of the funds here talks about any of those possibilities.
Where's the balance of, unless I just...
5,000.
Yeah, where's the balance to get to the 10,000 minimum?
It would be from the general fund, I believe, is the allocation of that resource, and it's just under $5,000 that is being requested. And my screen just went dark, but I can tell you that exact amount.
It's from our general fund or Arts and Humanities general fund?
It's from the city of Salina's general fund. There are provisions within these fund agreements that in the event that the Salina Arts and Humanities Foundation ceased to exist, there is an opportunity for the intent of the donors and the description of how those funds are utilized to best match those. And I don't want to speak in any more detail for the community foundation, but Salina Arts and Humanities Foundation has an endowment account there and two other accounts that are used for arts and humanities and other programming, and the intent of that organization is to protect the donor's intent with the funds and their intended purpose. We did set it up so that this wasn't, because of the nature of the original gift, we did set this up to be fully redeemable at the 300th anniversary. If a future group of commissioners or board members decides that they'd like to leave some seed money for a 400th year, then they will have that option at the time, but the fund would cease to exist when it was liquidated at that time. It does require, in order to establish that named fund and have it be operational as a separate fund that isn't included in other arts and humanities accounts, a $10,000 minimum is required by the Greater Salina Community Foundation. The dollar amount that was referenced is $4,249.43.
Commissioners, that would be considered your contribution in 2074 for the tricentennial, so they should not have a request at that time for the minutes.
Okay, is there any other questions? I guess that's it. Any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, with a great deal of faith and optimism, I move to approve the establishment of a designated tricentennial project fund at the Greater Salina Community Foundation, authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the establishment of a designated tricentennial project fund at the Greater Salina Community Foundation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes, motion passes. 7.3.
Item 7.3, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 16-10829, Amending Chapter 31, Articles 1 through 10 of the Salina Code pertaining to the Property Maintenance Code.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We're bringing to you this evening a second reading on the ordinance 16-10829. It was brought to you at the April 25th meeting for the first reading. There was concerns were expressed, some comments were received since that time and during that time. In response to these concerns, staff has made the requested revisions that you see in your packet to the proposed code amendment, and it was specific to the fencing and how fencing is to be regulated. And it's staff's recommendation this evening that we adopt on second reading ordinance 16-10829 with the modifications that you have before you. Now, staff, for any questions you may have on that item?
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Brown, and looking at the previously presented and the revised, on this being the only change, assuming, and that is, was that just taken out so that, what's the, is there another chapter that handles the...
The one sentence that you see this revised on the fencing, basically the sentence states, "All fencing shall be maintained in good condition, free of damaged bricks or missing structural members." That is in and of itself more than adequate for us to address any damaged or dilapidated fencing. By including peeling paint and leaning and that type of thing, it becomes a very difficult process as to what degree of, is it 30 degrees, 40 degrees? How much is it leaning before it's out of compliance? With just that one statement, it satisfies, it makes it very easy for staff as well to enforce where it's very plain and clear that a damaged fence is, with structural members damaged and that type of thing is what we're going to be looking at.
Okay, so it takes a more of a structural approach versus any sort of aesthetic?
Right.
Okay.
Versus a cosmetic of any kind.
Right, okay.
Commissioners, other thing with that too is we had a concern, a lot of times you'll see cedar fences that the owner chooses not to stain them, and they're a natural cedar fence. Well, it seems fine for a while, and then in time, like any wood, they will eventually deteriorate. But the thought being is if we have a provision that says your paint's flaking off, your stain's fading, or what have you, and they come back and they say, "Well, yeah, but right across my backyard, they don't have any. How is mine any worse than that?" Then you're into a pure aesthetic, and we really wanted to focus on the deteriorating aspect. So, in that case, they're all lumped in together, it's about deterioration. I think the language on that's very good.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Jim, had a quick question, and we may have had a misunderstanding on our emails too. There's the section that has to do with the minimum size of a bedroom, and one of the concerns was is if we happen, especially in the older part of town with the smaller homes, have maybe a family in a small house, possibly a two-bedroom house, you've got a couple of kids in maybe a single bedroom, and the bedroom is less than 70 square feet, maybe there's a bunk bed or what have you, what we were going to be able to do with that. And others, the thought that you might be able to use your discretionary authority, but I would think there'd have to be another technical factor that you could reach to. Is there one that you came up with or something that you would look at?
There's actually a three-phase approach, it's complaint-based. But then again, as we researched this, I guess one of our biggest concerns was Section 112.9 overcrowding. Well, staff discovered that on the first reading of this ordinance, Section 112.9 was not included, and for the reason being that it had already been discussed with legal that it would be very difficult, as you said, if it's only 70 square feet and there's more than the number allowed into that bedroom, how are we going to truly enforce that? We can't ask someone to increase the size of their home or increase the size of their bedroom. So, it was discovered by staff that this was omitted in the first reading, nor do we wish to reintroduce it in the second reading, just so that we can delete the overcrowding provision. Now, for the size of the rooms, those provisions still apply, but it's not going to be strict, it's strict to the size of the room in and of itself. For example, it's mirroring what the International Residential Code states as far as the minimum size for a living room being 120 square feet. Do you have 120 square feet? We're not going in and saying, "How many people do you have in this living room?" For instance, a bedroom has to be 70 square feet. Is it 70 square feet? Those type of things. Not as the number of personnel or number of family members in those rooms. We're not, that's not going to be included in this. The square foot, as I said, mirrors the international code bodies, and it's merely giving the renters, the occupants, the owners, the minimum size of what these rooms should be to have occupancy. One thing to note, for the first time in the 2012 edition of it, and I'm getting into another code body, International Residential Code exempted kitchens. We used to have a square foot minimum for kitchens. That has since been removed. However, you must maintain three feet around your appliances so that you can easily walk around. So, it evolves with each and every code cycle. So, our square feet is still applicable as it mirrors the International Residential Code, but our overcrowding issue is not going to be addressed.
I understand that. Here's my question, I guess, let's just take the bedroom. It's 70 square feet minimum, or if you have more than one occupant, where the occupant does affect the size, it's not less than 50 square feet minimum per occupant. So, let's just say you have a small, older, two-bedroom house, you have a married couple in one bedroom, and you have a couple of kids in the other bedroom. And in either circumstance, if either of those bedrooms are less than 100 square feet, they'd be in violation of the code. What would, so at that point, you have a choice. Strict enforcement of the code, let's just say the total square footage of the bedroom is 90 square feet, but you have two occupants, which means it should be 100. Strict enforcement would say you can't occupy the home because if they had two people in this bedroom, two people in that one, and there's really, you can't switch them, in other words, you can't move a person from one bedroom to another to offset that, then by code, they can't occupy the dwelling. And we're talking presumably related persons, not unrelated, that's usually a different type of, it's usually a zoning issue. So, if you have a situation where it's a family, they're all related, but the bedroom is too small for two people, there's not a place for the other person to sleep, we have to enforce the code. Are there factors in the code that you can specifically draw on that say we would not have to ask them to no longer dwell at that location?
Yes, specifically in the code body itself, within the International Property Maintenance Code, there is two analyses that must be done. Once the complaint base, you go and investigate, of course, you notify the owner of the property to gain access, go and investigate. There's two different scenarios, two different analyses that must be performed. You measure and determine the size of each bedroom. Each house is going to be different, of course, and it's going to be treated on an individual basis. You determine the size of the bedrooms. It could be merely a situation where just because the teenage daughter wants the largest bedrooms, that may not be the best applicable approach to bring it into compliance. Also, with the living room, there's also a provision in there as well on another analysis that can be performed under the study. It's not uncommon for somebody to have sleeper sofas and that type of thing, and children sleep on that at night, and they fold it up and use it as a normal sofa during the day.
So, that would be allowable, a hide-a-bed situation or something?
Yes, but it's based on those two analyses that need to be done on-site.
I just wanted to be sure we weren't in a position where we would have to, we wouldn't have any options, and we'd have to force the home to be vacant, especially if you may have a landlord-tenant situation in which a landlord might not... may have a landlord-tenant situation in which a landlord might not be treating their tenant fairly, and they look at the code and they say, "Oh, I know that they have, you know, two people and the bedroom's too small. That's my angle to try to get them out of there." So, you could see a landlord try to take advantage, but as long as we have options like that, then I think...
We do have those options, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On a case-by-case.
Appreciate it.
And is that still in the Minimum Housing Code, then? Because I seem to remember it was, there was square footage in the Minimum Housing Code.
It was, years ago, the Minimum Housing Code, and that's where a lot of this comes from.
Oh, okay.
It evolves every three years, every three years. So, now, instead of it being considered or called a Minimum Housing Code, it's now the International Property Maintenance Code, and you're looking at room sizes and those provisions that actually mirror a lot of that language from years ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody have any questions?
[inaudible].
Any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number one six dash one zero eight two nine, as amended. Second.
I have a motion and a second to have second reading on ordinance number sixteen one oh eight two nine. Shandy, roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Gosh, we don't have any development business. Is there any other business anybody wants to discuss? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss.
So moved.
Adhere.
Second.
So moved, okay, got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.